Welcome to the October 16th, 2024 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call our meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. We have not had anybody register for public comments, so our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the October 2nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. We had a chance to review those ahead of time, so...
If there are no additions or subtractions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. And next, also, the consent agenda, which we also had time to review ahead of time. Does anybody have any items they would like to have removed for further discussion? And if not, we'll be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion and a second.
I am not...
Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Next, we have our GDO section of our agenda. We have two items there today. The first item is Robert Rose Village West, the third re-subdivision of Lot 2, final plat for two lots on 10.13 acres, zoned PUD and GDO 1, located along Robert Rose Drive and Maple Grove Drive. TDK Land LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie, good afternoon.
And I think we're having some issues with that monitor up there, so if the cable department can change the monitors over to my computer, which I think they have done. There we go.
Oh, much better. So, good afternoon, Chair Jones and Murfreesboro Planning Commission members. We have two items on our GDO portion of our agenda today. Both of those are final plats. You would typically find those on your consent agenda, however, as these are located inside of our Gateway Design Overlay, they are required to come before you for your review and consideration. The first item is Robert Rose Village West, third re-subdivision of Lot 2. This is on behalf of TDK Land and presented to us by Mr. Matt Taylor of SEC. The plat is generally in good order, and we would request that any approval be subject to staff comments.
Can I just ask, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this re-subdivision plat?
If there are none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. And I'm sure that was subject to all staff comments.
It absolutely was.
Yes, okay. Our next item is the Fountains at Gateway, lots 1 and 2.
It's too big.
Final plat for two lots on 17.84 acres, zoned PUD and GDO 3, located along Medical Center Parkway. Fountains at Gateway LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again, Chair Jones. The second item for your considerations today is a final plat for Fountains at Gateway, lots 1 and 2. This plat, again, is generally in good order. We would request that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments.
Any questions? Not? We're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. All right. Concludes our GDO portion of our agenda. We are moving on to plats and plans.
If we can jump over to up at the top, Matthew, the aerial at the beginning of the staff report. So, this particular property is in our CCO, the Randy Fan property. You may recall, we had a building on there that was under construction for a while. Mr. Fan has completed it and was one of the first in our CCO to really do some redevelopment. So, he's just recently completed the building there on the northerly portion of the lot. It's two stories. It's all commercial, both upstairs and downstairs. And the second building, where you have that vacant portion where the little site label is, used to be a single-family detached dwelling unit that was demolished a couple years ago, and he's looking at putting a similar twin building to the existing one that you see out on Manny.
And Ms. Smith, just real quick, if I could, just for the record, this is the Randy Fan, Lot 1, Building 3, site plan for 2,312 square foot office building on 0.63 acres, zoned commercial highway and CCO. Located along South Manny Avenue, Randy Fan is the developer. So, thank you. Please continue. Thank you.
So, this particular property, back in 2008, our BZA approved a six-foot setback along Manny Street, which was a large deviation from the normal 42-foot setback that you would see because of its kind of downtown context. That was recorded in a plat, and the lots were consolidated at that time, so that six-foot setback runs down Manny along the property parcel. When we're looking at all three of the development pieces, the two existing buildings and the new 2,312 square foot two-story office building, we would normally require a total of 32 parking spaces on-site, but because it's within the CCO, they state that if there's any street parking within the project site, that that can give them up to a 50% reduction, but we still like to see how it compares. So, when you count those five parking spaces in the street, plus the 28 that they will have on-site, we're at a total of 35 versus outside the CCO, it would normally be 32. So, it does meet the city standard policies. The last four projects you had in our downtown, they all really met the regular parking policy, so we have not gotten to a project yet where they're actually looking at, like this one, only needing 16. But, we want to make sure you're aware of that, so as we do get a project in the future, they would have that potential available in our current policies.
Ms. Smith, would you let me scroll down to the site plan?
Yes, please. And so, the site plan layout for the project site would incorporate the exterior staircase, similar to the building that's on the ground today, that will go adjacent to the drive entry. Yeah, it's really small. Very small building, but it'll be an exterior staircase, and then they'll provide additional parking in the back of the project site. And then, if you'll notice, the parcel actually touches all the way down to East Castle Street. That is in our downtown Main Street revitalization plan. So, we are looking at having a new decorative light pole being added to that portion of the frontage, and of course, Manny was improved by the city decade or so ago. That will stay in place with the drive access being closed to the old house project, and that will provide that additional parking space in the street. So, with that, going to the elevations. The elevations, again, it's all brick building in place. It mimics what we had next door, but you'll notice the small frontages. We're looking at copper canopies over the tops of the doors. They're proposing copper downspout scuppers that would come down the building and really, again, finish off the rest of this project site. Staff recommends that the project is in good order and that as long as it's subject to the several staff comments, that it should be approved and moved forward.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this?
And Mr. Fan is in the audience. If you have any questions for him, as well as their engineer manly.
Any questions?
If there are none, I will move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our next item is Veterans Park, a site plan for a city park with four buildings on 147 acres, zoned CF, CH, and P, located along Veterans Parkway and Cloister Drive. City of Murfreesboro is the developer. Mr. Donovan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones. Before you this afternoon, you have a site plan for Veterans Park, 147-acre park site on Veterans Parkway. This is just south of the West Lawn and Berkshire Developments, and then just north of the Cloister Residential Subdivision that is off of Veterans. So, the park site plan that's before you features an extensive trail network, playground, an active sports area, an event-long, multipurpose fields, as well as several pavilions on-site. So, the main entrance that you can see on the site plan before you would bring you into a centralized parking area that has access to the park's trail network, as well as the other recreation opportunities within the park, including two approximately 2,000-square-foot pavilions that also have a restroom associated with the pavilion, and a larger maintenance pavilion that is off of the event lawn that is approximately 3,500 square foot and set up where it could be utilized for events to take place in that area. There are also some active recreation courts that we've been, had discussions with. It looks like they're going to be programmed with pickleball. The access off of Cloister also has its own pavilion. It's similar size to the 2,000-square-foot pavilion that's in the portion accessible off of Veterans Parkway. As far as the architecture of the pavilions within the park, they're all similar in style. They have large timbers that are holding up the angled roof, one-sided angled roofs, with the underside of the ceiling being clad in wood, and standing seam metal roof, and then standing seam clad restroom enclosures on the three pavilions that are approximately 2,000 square feet. The larger maintenance pavilion does have some stone on the facade of that, and the dumpster enclosure is taken from the architecture of those buildings and enclosed in wood to reflect the architecture of the pavilions. So, staff has reviewed the site plan. It's in generally good order, and staff recommends approval with the conditions in the staff report.
Okay. Any questions?
I really appreciate all of staff's work, both planning and Parks and Rec to get this done. This has been a big deal since I've been on council, so I will move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. That concludes our plats and plans, and moving on to new business. Our first item, we have two items. First item is a zoning application for approximately 69.1 acres, located along Thompson Road, to be rezoned from RS15 to PRD. Salem Landing 3, PRD. Old South Properties is the applicant. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So, the property before you today is requesting to rezone from RS15 to PRD, Salem Landing 3. This is approximately a 69-acre site that is currently vacant, and it is located on the north side of Thompson Road, and it is just south of the terminus of Colton Lane that would be accessible off of Highway 99 to the north. So, as far as adjacent land uses, the adjacent land uses to this property are residential in nature and zoned accordingly. To the north is existing portions of Salem Landing, Salem Landing 1 and 2, which are zoned RS6, which has a 6,000-square-foot lot minimum, whereas to the east, south, and west of the properties is zoned medium-density residential and is in the unincorporated, is in unincorporated Rollford County. So, what surrounds this is exclusively single-family residences. Salem Landing, existing to the north, is the only portion that abuts this that is within the current city limits of Murfreesboro. Clear Ridge is a single-family residential subdivision just to the west that is in the county. Just beyond Clear Ridge is the campuses of Rockville Elementary, Middle, and High Schools, kind of for some context of the location of this site. So, the Salem Landing PRD itself, Salem Landing 3 PRD itself, is proposed to be 195 detached, single-family homes, which would be completed within four phases, on lots ranging from a 6,500-lot minimum to some lots that are over 10,000 square feet. The homes will feature one- and two-story design with front porches and two-car garage. All the homes will have a minimum of a 24-inch brick or stone water table on the front and a 24-inch brick water table on the remaining three sides. So, access to the side is off of either Thompson Road. There's one that is on the far west of the subdivision. The map that you should be able to see in front of you, it's on the right-hand portion of the page, is the only access that we currently have, and then the other access would be coming off of Highway 99. At staff's request, we did ask for the cul-de-sac that is on the southern side of the property to have a right-of-way there that would connect out to Thompson Road and could be built out eventually if needed. There was some conversation between city staff and the developer and the county about that road actually going out to Thompson Road, but we wanted to make sure we preserve that for a future connection if needed. So, within the development, there are a variety of amenities, including a dog park, a basketball court, playground, pavilion, disc golf course, walking trails, ML kiosk, and landscaped buffer yards. So, some of the items that I want to point out in the PRD itself, on the lots that are akin to 10,000-square-foot zoning, there would be an exception there from a 10-foot setback down to the 5 feet that the applicant is proposing for 5-foot setbacks on those lots that are included. Other than that, some highlights that staff worked to get in this are landscape buffers are on the east, south, and west sides of the development. Those are going to be Type A buffers that are evergreen. That's to help provide some buffering and screening to the neighboring county properties in the county. And then, I've already mentioned one of the exceptions. The second is this is a deviation from the future land use plan. The future land use plan identifies RS15, RS12, RS10 being supported by the future land use plan. And there are some exceptions where clusters are allowed or could potentially be discussed. So, those are the couple of variations from either our zoning ordinance or the land use plan that are being considered as a part of the PRD. So, I've already mentioned this, but the future land use map refers to this as suburban residential, which is a 1 to 4 units per acre density that we're looking at, which is the RS15, RS12, RS10, and in some cases, PRD being allowed in the suburban residential classification. So, this doesn't meet the future land use classification in a strict sense. It'd be something for the Planning Commission to discuss if they think it's appropriate.
Is that based off of the whole lot, using the park as well, or just where the buildings are going?
So, we asked them to update that number, and they are under it at the three-point, I believe it's 91, units an acre, excluding the large area that has some topographical constraints in the southwest corner of the lot.
So, if, we always base it on the whole lot on every other deal, so if we base it off the whole lot on this one, they're under that threshold?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I confirm real quick? The page we're looking at right now on our screen says around the outside areas, the over, the little writing in there says minimum lot size 10,000 square feet. The ones that are up adjoining the Salem 1 and 2 say minimum lot size 6,000 square feet, and then on the interior, they say minimum size 8,000 for interior and 10,000 for the corner lots. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll explain this a little further, Chair Jones. So, this is in the staff report, right on a page where we included some encouraged improvements that staff has had discussions with the developer since this project was initiated. This map here has actually been communicated to the developer early on in the process of the, how the lot size, staff, what staff would be supportive of as far as lot size variation within the development. So, the 6,000-square-foot minimum is what staff requested they provide along existent, the existing phases of Salem Landing. Transition in the middle to an 8,000 minimum and 10,000 square foot minimum for corner lots, and then 10,000 square foot lot minimum on the outermost parcels that are bordering the county properties and the open space. But, yeah, so that's what that illustration is there for. That was communicated to the applicant. Staff has also had several, or had a discussion with the applicant to another item that's on that, encouraged improvements. We met with our city traffic engineer to discuss this site. He believes that this port, this development is going to warrant a traffic signal at Rivermont Drive and Rivermont Way and New Salem Highway out on 99. And what he's asked is that, included in the PRD, is that there's a mechanism to, that if that light is installed when warranted or prior to the approvals for Phase 3 of the development. And that was, staff had several meetings, myself and the city engineer, or the city traffic engineer met, Mr. Newman met with the traffic, city traffic engineer as well to discuss this, and it was communicated that that was needed because of the development of this property warrant and will warrant it at some point in the future.
Could their impact fees not be pushed towards the traffic? I mean, that's why we have the street impact fees for improvements to the infrastructure, so wouldn't their impact fees pay for the streetlight?
Mr. Baumley?
Madam Chair, Planning Commission, Councilman Wright, yes, we could do an offset with the developer to set that in place if warranted.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Donovan, what's the total amount of lots again?
195.
And there's two access point in on 99 and one on Thompson, correct?
Yes, sir. There's one coming from the north. There will actually eventually be a second one, but they're all going to go out Rivermont Drive to 99 eventually.
Good.
Richard, I'll pull up the aerial photography on GIS for the whole subdivision to give them some context. So, there's Rivermont Way coming in from New Salem Highway. There's a daycare at the front, and there's a retail center that's going to be developed on this parcel. And so, Rivermont Way goes down all the way to Section 2 of Salem Landing, which is under development right now. This is the only section here. I think it's Section 2, Phase 2, Mr. McGuire, that has not been platted yet. There's one existing stub from the north going into the subject property here, and there'll be an additional stub from the north coming in here. And so, as Mr. Donovan mentioned, that traffic will funnel back up to Rivermont Way here, which will intersect with New Salem Highway here, and we would imagine that that's where most of the traffic will gravitate towards.
I think if we do the offset on the impact fees, it kind of takes care of the light itself, and that's why, that's why that mechanism was put into place.
And again, if I could just understand the map we were looking at that showed the vision of the 6,000, 8,000, 10,000-square-foot lots, is what the city was proposing to them, or is that part of their plan book that they're proposing?
So, Chair Jones, that is not part of the plan book. That is communication from city planning staff to the developer of the lot sizes that we would have, we were supportive of within the development.
So, what specifically, then, Mr. Donovan, were the issues with their proposed plan as it pertains to lot sizes?
And what I've pulled up now is their proposed plan.
Oops, yeah, there. Okay. This is the proposed.
Page 188 of the plan.
Yeah, and so, what we communicated with them from the beginning was that this was a, you know, what the land use plan supported was the RS15 to RS10, and that any deviation from that, we would want to see a stepped-up amenity package, improvements into the architecture of the buildings itself. So, basically, as a trade-off to get smaller lots, expect more amenities for the future residents of the site and a product that had more durable materials and had some variation where you weren't getting just facades of hardy sod entirely on three sides of the building where there was some architectural variation.
Mr. Donovan, you said you wanted increased amenities, but they have a dog park, a basketball court, a playground, walking trails, a pavilion, and a disc golf course.
Yeah.
Did you want them to also put a Disneyland?
I mean, and also, these are affordable houses that, I mean, we don't have a product like this in all of Murfrees... Old South may be the only people building a single-family detached house that's an affordable product in all of town.
Yeah, I mean, these aren't, these aren't single-family attached homes. These are, the minimum they're looking at is a 6,500-square-foot lot. I mean, this is a very decent home for many of the people that live in Murfreesboro and are moving into Murfreesboro. I mean...
And I thought at council, not at Planning Commission level, but at council level, we wanted to promote single-family houses, and especially, we talk about affordable housing all the time. This is an affordable housing neighborhood as presented.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we can ask...
I want to make a motion to approve as presented.
Well, this is, we're going to set a public hearing on this.
And just to give you a little bit of additional context into what staff was thinking was, as we were moving further out into more, not rural areas of the counties, not the best way to put it, but as we were getting further and further out into the periphery of the county, knowing what was around it, down Thompson Road, being surrounded more by larger lots, single-family residential properties, just, we were looking at it as more of a transition to the less dense uses that were further out of the city limits. And so, this is, since it was really on the, kind of the fringe of the city limits, so we were just trying to think of an appropriate transition from their existing subdivision down to Thompson Road.
And I mean, I agree with that in concept, Matthew. I just, I personally consider this an appropriate transition. These are still very good-sized lots. I mean, especially, I mean, we've approved much smaller lots on Highway 99 recently, so... So that's my two cents. But I mean, we haven't heard from the applicant yet. I'm sorry, I'm totally hijacking it. Do we, does the applicant want to, or anything else, Mr. Donovan?
No, ma'am, that's all I have.
And by the way, that was my nudge to get Disneyland to actually build a park here. For those of you who don't know, I love Disney. We got great property.
Remember that they want to come to Nashville.
I know, see?
And we do have a neighborhood meeting scheduled on this for October 21st at Fellowship United Methodist Church. We thought that would be a good idea considering that there was, you know, down the street on Jurgen Road when Magnolia Grove was annexed and zoned, that there was quite a bit of public input and we thought it would be a good idea to go ahead and begin outreach to the community. And we would recommend if the planning commission sees fit a public hearing date of October 30th for this item as well.
October 30th?
Yes.
Move to set the public...
Mr. Bobo, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to follow up with what Ms. Sabalwater mentioned, if we have a presentation or anything like that. So, good afternoon. My name is Dan Bobo with Old South Properties. We have appreciated the opportunity to work with staff. We've worked through several different meetings. We've worked with what we think is a future land use map in the designated area. Clyde does have a presentation. If you want to hear it, everything, all the information is in the book. Most of the discussion that we've had so far pertains to the suburban residential characteristic and how we think that we meet a lot of the guidelines that are called out for in the future land use map. And so we feel like it's a good, that it meets the suburban residential area and it is also a continuation of the existing Salem Landing subdivision. So if there's any specifics that we need to address regarding density calculations, lot sizes, what is in our plan book is our proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bobo. Anybody care to hear any more specifics from the presentation or would you want to set your public hearing?
I'm good if everybody else is good.
Yeah. I read through the plan book. Everything seems ready for a public hearing to me.
October 30th.
On October 2.
Move to set the public hearing for October 30th.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Sabalwater? Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Silas? Sorry. Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones? And Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Carroll, yes. That's everybody. All right.
You start not getting your paycheck either?
When Reggie came first, I knew it was wrong.
Okay. So set the public hearing for October 30th. And our next item is a zoning application to amend the PRD zoning, East Castle Manor PRD 2023-411, on approximately 0.15 acres located along East Castle Street with CCO zoning to remain. Nashville Comfort LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My item is much less complicated than the last one. This one you have seen before and previously approved, a PRD on East Castle Street going from a single-family residential or home to a RD and to a PRD, a town home, not town home, duplex was constructed on the lot. When you originally approved it, the property was scheduled to have a 22-foot front build two line somewhere in the shuffle. This is sitting 40 feet back from the right-of-way. And when we look at minor deviations in our zoning code, we cannot approve a minor deviation when it's more than, I believe it's five feet of a variation of a location for a map. So we are looking at having this as a public hearing to amend their program book to really just address this particular item, which as you see on the site plan layout, before the building would have been closer to the, aligned with the adjacent building to the front and only accommodate two parking spaces in front of each unit with the 40-foot build two line of four parking spaces can fit in front of that garage and then the two within one in each garage. So with that, we would recommend you set a public hearing for October 30th. And that's that new date that we have because you moved it as of last meeting.
Okay. Any questions or set a public hearing on this item?
I move to set the public hearing for October 30th.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Sabalwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have staff reports and other business. Mr. Blomley?
Just to get a head count for October 30th, I think Ms. Jones, last time I checked, you were the only one who would not be able to make it. Is that still?
That's correct.
Accurate? Everybody else good for October 30th?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Thank you all.
Okay. Do we have just a lot of visitors this afternoon?
Nothing else better to do on a Wednesday, Chair Jones.
I was going to say, these are the peeps that I'm in Leadership Rutherford with. So they are getting extra credit today because we have to go to about, I don't know, 10 different meetings of public bodies, so I don't get credit for today.
She told you this would be one of the shortest meetings you could attend.
I said 45 minutes and we're beating that time today.
Yes, yeah. Well, we're so glad you're here and...
I think what Stephanie says, I think what Stephanie says is that only night meetings count, though.
Yeah, you need to come back. Can you tell? You need to come back for the night meeting. Yeah. Check out those public hearings. Well, we're glad you're here.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thanks for doing the Leadership Rutherford. It's a wonderful program. All right. Any other business? And if not, we stand adjourned.